We'll get started. I have 6:30 and all the computer screens that I'm staring at. The call to order meeting number 1801 of the Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. All regular members are present. Clark or Mike, are there any added agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. Legal notices, there were two. East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a regular meeting on Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 6:30 PM via the remote video conferencing platform Zoom. The following public hearing will be heard. PZ 2021-13, 14 Sullivan Farm Road, special use permit application for an accessory apartment. A full copy of the application is available on the town clerk's webpage, now on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town website. All interested persons may attend the online meeting in public hearing to be heard on this topic, dated April 13, 2021, East Windsor, Connecticut. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer on April 16, as well as April 22, 2021. Public hearing number two, East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a regular meeting on Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 6:30 PM via the remote video plant conferencing platform Zoom. The following public hearing will be heard. PZ-2021-14, which is 148 North Road, Unit 4, Special Use Permit Application for Gift Shop. A full copy of the application is available on the town clerk's webpage and on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend the online meeting and public hearing to be heard on this topic, dated April 13, 2021, East Windsor, Connecticut. I ask if you please put your thing on mute. Thank you. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer on April 16, as well as April 22, 2021. This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Are there any comments from the audience for something that's not already on tonight's agenda? If you wish to speak to us, please do so now. Okay, I'll move on. Approval of minutes for April 13, 2021. It's my understanding that these minutes were not available the time the packages were prepared. That being the case, can someone offer a motion to table this to the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table approval of minutes from the April 13 meeting to our next meeting, which would be in May.
There's a motion on the table to table taking action on the April 13, 2021 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Here or none? Call for vote. All in favor say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I see five hands, so approved unanimously. Receipt of applications. PZ-2021-15, Wells Road, resubdivision application for a five lot resubdivision. Proposed hearing date, May 11, 2021. Item B. PZ 2021-16, Wells Road, Special Use Permit Application to Allow the Creation of a Rear Lot. Proposed hearing date, May 11, 2021. Item C, PZ-2021, excuse me, 2021-17, 8 Church Street, resubdivision application for one lot resubdivision. Proposed hearing date, May 11, 2021. Item D, item number PZ 2021-18, for 76 and 84 North Road in 7 Winkler Road. Special Use Permit Application for Construction of an Automatic Car Wash Accessory to an Existing Automotive Filling Station. Proposed public hearing, May 11, 2021. Moving on now to item 10, new public hearings. Item A, PZ-2021-13, which is 14 Sullivan Farm Road for a Special Use Permit Application for an Accessory Apartment. Is there someone here for this application? Is Samantha or Samantha's representative on the call tonight? Clark, do you know if anyone in your office has made contact with Samantha regarding the proposed public hearing and the special use permit application?
I'm sure they did initially, but I don't know whether there was any follow-up conversation.
Okay. So what's the commission's fancy on this one? Do you want to table this to a future meeting? So we can have conversation and dialogue with the applicant? Because we're not going to be able to answer any questions from any concerned residents or any staff questions. We won't be able to provide any answer.
I'd like to table it, table.
Agreed.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, yeah. One last chance. Is Samantha in the audience? Or Samantha's representative on the new public hearing, 14 Sullivan Farm Road? Okay, so can someone offer a motion to table the new public hearing?
I will make a motion to table the public hearing on PZ 2021-13 for 14 Sullivan Farm Road. It's a special permit application for an accessory apartment till our May 11 meeting, in the hopes that the applicant will be available to give us background and answer questions.
There's a motion on the table to table the application till May 11, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thurs. Any discussion? Here or none? A call for vote. All in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
I see five hands, so approved unanimously. Item B, under new public hearings. PZ-2021-14, 148 North Road, Unit 4, Special Use Permit Application for Gift Shop. Is someone here for this one? Is James here? Or James is representative for this public hearing? One last chance. Is James out there? Or James is representative? Well, I think be consistent what we do with the other application. I encourage us to make a motion to table this to our next meeting. Will someone kindly offer that?
I will make a motion to table the application, PZ 2021-14, for 148 North Road, Unit 4, Special Use Permit Application for Gift Shop, because the applicant is not present. And that would be tabled till our May 11 meeting.
There's a motion on the table to table this application. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Frank. Any discussion? Here or none? A call for vote. All in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Hi, this is. I'm sorry, we couldn't get any volume out of our phone. We're here, Jim and Debbie. Skazafava.
Okay, no problem. We'll move you to the end of, well, hold on a second. So I'm going to ask this question to town staff. Is there going to be a problem on the agenda if we add it on as a new agenda item back to the agenda? Since we just took a vote on this?
Shooting from my parliamentarian hip here. You didn't announce the vote. Do you think that that constitutes you haven't quite completed that action and you can still take it up?
Okay, I definitely would like to. You know, there's no reason why we need to kick this to another meeting when the applicant is here and we have a full board. So why don't we, okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. So can you just kindly provide a little, can you introduce yourselves and provide a little bit of background regarding the request that we've been asked the Complaining Zoning Commission to consider?
I've been a soap maker here for about 30 years. And I have a lot of customers and people love it. And I think it's about the best soap around. And I want to have a gift shop where I offer handmade soap and other bath and body products and soap dishes and sponges and all the luxuries of on bathing. It's a feel-good product. Everything smells great and it's fun. So I'd like to offer that to the community.
Thank you. Just for clarity, can you just please identify yourself for the record? I see on my screen. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no problem. So also, can you just help me narrow in on the site? Obviously, I know it's at 148 North Road, but where exactly is it? And what are the neighboring businesses like?
It's in the back of, there's a lot of buildings there. And it's in the back. I'm Unit 4. There's a hair salon. There's also, I think, a dentist's office and a doctor's office. And in the front, there's a tattoo studio.
Hobby shop.
Hobby shop and another hair salon and I think another barber shop.
And the gas station.
Just for the record, it's Bastel Plaza. Everybody knows that.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the members of the commission if we have any concerns or any questions for the applicant. So why don't I start with Commissioner Goldin? Anne, do you have any comments or concerns?
I have a question. Um, I understand the applicant makes soap. Is the soap made on another premise? Or is the manufacturing of the soap going to happen here?
Um, there.
And do you use lye and various chemicals in the soap manufacturing? Or is it more natural process?
It's more natural, but lye is in all soap. I don't believe you can make soap without lye.
It dissipates after a certain period of time. So when you use the soap, there's no lye in it. It's like catalyst.
Yeah, I wasn't so much asking in the soap. I was thinking for the butters next to you. If you were storing large quantities of lye. And I don't know if lye is an airborne product or it's a liquid product or what it is when you're making soap.
It's, they're lye crystals. And I keep it in a closed container. And when I do take the lye out, I have a mask on. And I use gloves. And as soon as I take a scoop out, I close the top right up and it's safely stored.
So it would not vaporize into the butters space.
Oh, no, no, it's not airborne at all. It's no different than putting Drano down your drain.
So it's considered hazardous material?
I suppose it is, yes.
But you have, I'll say, small quantity and you manage it keeping the lid on the container?
Yes.
It's not like you have lots of 5 gallon drums of it on the floor.
No, no.
Nope.
No, it's in powder form too. So I'm very careful with it. I know it can burn you really bad. So.
Yep. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Gouding, any questions or concerns?
Let me get off. No, not really. She answered my question. Lye is very caustic and it can burn you. And if it's in powdered form, I think you have to be extra careful in case for some reason it gets airborne and gets on especially children or youngsters. It can, it can be really harmful.
No one's allowed where I use the lye. I've sectioned that whole part off. So there's no access to it from the public.
That's good. That answers my question more thoroughly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, any comments, concerns?
Wrong, Jim.
I'm sorry, sorry. Commissioner Thurs.
Do you need a sign off from the Department of Health? Because the last tenant that tried to go in there, like Anne mentioned, was trying to put a nail salon in there. And they actually got them on exhaust fan and they ended up moving out.
Yeah, she's very nice. It's probably no different than the hair salon using bleach. Um, it is, it is caustic, but if you're careful with it, it's not. I mean, I'm monitored by the state of Connecticut too.
Okay.
So I have inspections and they monitor me, I guess. So.
Okay, that's fine.
Are you certified by the state to handle this material?
Yes.
Commissioner Kozowski, any comments, concerns?
I guess my question is maybe more directed towards staff is I'm looking at the B3 reg. And now since we're talking about manufacturing onsite, that is only permitted through a special use permit. So does there need to be another special use application for manufacturing? Or is that covered underneath this one applicant?
If you'll bear with me, I'll take a look and if Mike has an answer, I'll defer to him.
I didn't look at the B3, but my, my, my thought would be the purpose of this special permit is so that you have the chance to talk about everything you're talking about now. And so if you feel that you understand her process properly, I mean, there's a public hearing, people can speak their mind about it. I wouldn't think another special permit is necessarily required. I, one thing that I want to look at is how we define manufacturing to know if it would involve something like this. But I wouldn't necessarily think a separate one would be required.
Well, the B3 shows a light manufacturing and a heavy manufacturing, which the heavy is not permitted, but it is, light manufacturing is permitted in the B3. But no, I just wanted to make sure that we were covered that it wasn't publicly noticed as a special use permit for manufacturing and retail, just simply the retail.
The question I have for the applicant is, you know, it says, this is going to be a gift shop. And then that's what we're talking about, maybe some light manufacturing, indicates soaps and bath products. But what's to say that you couldn't decide to sell toys tomorrow? I mean, is it, I don't think we're restricting use. I mean, that's probably not to your attention. And I don't think there's any objection to that, but I'm just clear in me. What, I just want some clarity, you know, is it, is it just going to be bath products? I don't think we're that specific in the zone. It's just a gift shop.
Well, I make bath products and I'm not allowed to sell toys. The state of Connecticut won't allow me to. But they do allow me to make soap and, you know, some hand lotions and things like that. But I am monitored by them. So. And it's, I mean, I make about 12 bars of soap at a time. So it's not a huge, not a huge thing. I don't process hundreds and hundreds of bars of soap a day.
For those in the audience, this is a public hearing. Are there any comments and questions on this application? If you wish to ask a question, just please do so at this time. Anybody wish to speak on this application? Okay. Any fellow commissioners? Do we have any follow-up questions for the applicant?
I guess my only question is really for town staff in that I think we're all understanding this to be a very small scale operation of, I'll call it craft manufacturing, as opposed to when you think of a large scale bath and body products operation. Do we need a condition or a finding with respect to the manufacturing in the approval motion?
I think, so getting back to a prior question about health district approval. I believe the applicant spoke directly to the health district. I know the health district informed us that this was being treated differently. They do regulate nail salons, but this was pitched as a gift shop. So there was no jurisdiction of the health district for gift shops. Perhaps it might put the commission at ease if there was a condition that if the applicant hasn't already, and she can answer this, mention the manufacturing, the light manufacturing aspect of this to the health district, that that be one of the requirements or conditions.
I already spoke to someone in the health department. And they didn't have a problem with it. They said if I'm monitored by the state of Connecticut, that they didn't, that they needed to monitor it also.
And that's for the manufacturing of the soap?
Right.
Could you explain to us, I'll say, what the state of Connecticut's role is in monitoring you? Do they do inspections? Do you do reporting of the amount of chemical you use?
Well, there's only one chemical and that is the lye. And yes, they come and they inspect me. They make sure that everything that I do and everything that I use is done carefully and with safety. I do report to them. I do send them, I do keep records of what I make and what I used in it. So that if somebody comes back and says, you know, it's like anything that you make, if it's defective in any way, they can, they can trace back to the batch that I made and what I used in it.
Oh, it's the Department of Consumer Protection that you're dealing with at the state?
Um, yes.
Anne, would you say that this type of use or any approval by the commission is, we have conditions of approval, but sometimes we don't identify all the other regulatory things that need to happen from other state officials or regulatory agencies, maybe the US government, Connecticut state government, and that stuff still applies. And I think that maybe this might fall into that category. I'm just talking out loud and I don't know if that's for sure. Sometimes we have the belts and suspenders approach. We specifically say health department approval or North Central Health Department approval beforehand or in conjunction with or prior to CO, those type of things. But I think a lot of applications are subject to other state and federal mandates that necessarily aren't covered here. Not that we can't go over and above and enlist them here.
I concur with you. And I see consumer protections oversight. And that's why I was asking what agency is about the safety of the product, not about the chemical storage on the premise and how it's handled. So if it wasn't fully vetted with the health district, that would be my concern. But she's indicating she did talk to the health district and told them that she was in doing this manufacturing. So with that, she's been transparent.
Well, yeah, in my view, she's been very transparent. But let me, let's take this a step forward. Let's say the application is approved and she's successful in the business. It's up and running. And you have, and you have in a butter and complain about smell. Is that a nuisance complaint? Is that something you would bring to local officials to talk about? Is there a regulatory agency that could investigate? You know, are you kind of going down this path, Anne?
Um, yeah, I guess the path I was going down is at what scale is the manufacturing? We don't have a condition. What she's doing is very small scale. I mean, 12 bars of soap is tiny. Um, once we've approved it, could it grow to something else?
So something that I would suggest the commission consider if it would make you more comfortable is, I think what we've heard is that the manufacturing is accessory to the retail use. And so you could potentially consider something to make sure that it remains accessory to the retail use. So the purpose of making the soap is to sell the soap. At some point, the commission might not be comfortable with you, with the operation turning into some wholesale type of scenario where it's made and shipped off, right? So you might be able to find a condition in there somewhere that the manufacturing be only to support onsite retail sales or something. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
That would make me totally comfortable.
And Debbie, does that, are you okay with something like that?
Yeah, totally. I mean, I do have customers that I do send a bar to now and then. I mean, it's, I can't make, I can't manufacture what's required. I can only, I mean, I've done this in my kitchen for 30 years. And I mean, it's, I'm just trying to branch out a little bit and make a little more money. So I'm fine with that. I don't, I mean, I'm not ever going to go to a warehouse. If I, if time comes, which I'm, I don't see that as ever happening, I'll go to a warehouse.
Or you would outgrow the site.
Oh, yeah.
Move the business somewhere else.
Yeah.
And that would be a whole different, yeah, another conversation somewhere.
I can assure you of that. I mean, I'm not looking to manufacture. I'm looking to offer exceptional products to people.
Let's circle back with the members of the audience. Is there any comments or questions? This is a public hearing. So fellow commission members, is there anything else that we want to ask the applicant before we consider closing the public hearing?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
I'm set.
Where is this supposed to be?
Okay. So with, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 148 North Road.
I'll move to close the public hearing on um, application PZ 2021-14 for a special use permit application for a gift shop to be located at 148 North Road.
There's a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
A call for vote. All those in favor say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
See five hands, the public hearing is closed. So either Clark or Mike, are we putting you on the spot to add another condition where you want to do this at the May eleventh meeting? To craft a condition that.
As an accessory use.
Yeah.
I think he can do that now. He's, he's good at that.
He's done it before, worked under pressure.
He means you, Mike.
Yeah, I, I can do it. Give me, is, is the, you've got something else on the agenda? I only need a minute or two.
Well, maybe we can talk about the Red Sox. Awful quiet.
So I can firm it up for. Is that you guys are planning to move this to new business to discuss? Are you gonna do it now or?
Well, it's. Why, why don't we do it here on the agenda?
Okay.
We already have a motion crafted. So basically, there's one condition you would add, add a second condition. First condition's administrative. I'm just trying to avoid the app and having to wait again for another two weeks or wait till the other new, old, old business item, which. Could potentially be a lengthy discussion among the commission members. Members of the office, audiences, please be patient with us. Just be another minute.
So tell me what you think about this, because recognizing, you know, she said that she does, you know, mail. Orders to her customers and without, especially at this time. Wanting to preclude her from being able to send something out FedEx, which is what everybody else does. The onsite production, onsite production shall be accessory to the retail use of the gift shop.
Excellent.
That's consistent with the testimony that we heard, and I don't think it, it limits the business in any way.
Very good, very good.
I think it's reasonable. Okay, with that, will someone offer a motion for approval?
I will offer a motion to approve application PZ. Twenty twenty-one dash fourteen for a special use permit. Application for our gift shop to be located at one forty-eight North Road, unit four map. One twenty-four, block twenty-four, lot eleven A, which is a B three zone. The approval is granted subject to conformance with the submitted application, supporting materials. And public hearing presentation as may be modified by the commission in this approval. And the following findings, and there are three findings. In the memo dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one from Clark J. Chayton. And two conditions. The first condition is a copy of the certificate of action shall be filed. On the land records prior to commencement of retail sales on the property. And the second condition is onsite produ- production. Shall be accessory to the retail use of the gift shop.
There's a motion on the table for approval, the special use permit application for a gift shop. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There are none. Call for a vote. Alls in favor say aye, raise their hand.
Aye.
Aye.
See five hands, passes unanimously. Congratulations and I wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care now. Next up under old business. Application PZ dash twenty twenty-one dash oh six. SJK Properties LLC. Protect Amendment Application to East Windsor Zoning Regulations. Someone's trying to get my attention.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I see somebody who may be the applicant from the last public hearing. That was tabled. If that is the case, you could always reconsider that motion. And continue tonight with moving it forward.
Yeah, why don't we do that after we finish with this business item? Is that? Okay. Right, so let me just restate that again. For under old business PZ dash twenty twenty-one dash oh six, SJK Properties LLC. A text memo and application to East Windsor zoning regulations, section eight oh two. Multi-family development district MFDD. So if members of the public, just, just for clarity, this is a, a, the public hearing is closed. This is only dialogue between commission members and, and town staff is permitted. So, Mike, the motto, you didn't offer an amended administrative memo kind of outlining the facts. Sharing some of the evidence that's been brought up during the public hearings. You kind of, you want to just kind of go through some of the. Sure. Some of the, some of the thought process of, of, of how, how that your staff memo may have been different from the last two weeks. Based on what we've been hearing from the community and the applicant.
Yeah, so. In going through the testimony, some of the questions that the commission had, some of the. Concerns that were raised and a lot of it, I think boiled down to, and frankly, it doesn't. It's not all to do with this tax amendment. I think that the regulation prior to had some gaps in that there are. Points where the commission, I think, felt like. In applying the regs, a zone change, you know, you don't get necessarily all the information you might want to be comfortable to make the zone change. If someone asks for an MFDD zone change, they could be asking for apartments, they could be asking for condos, they could be asking for single family detached. They could be asking for elderly housing, you know, you don't really know. And the type of development may or may not be appropriate on a specific parcel. Those are important components. And so if you look at the second page of my memo, you will see some suggested changes. Clark and I went around, I don't know, a hundred times with how we might be able to make some adjustments that were both. Statutorily compliant with what we could do, but also did not change the intent of the applicant, but provided a little bit more clarity and control. So one of the things we added, and you'll see that is in yellow, if you have a color copy. Is that in the beginning, we're requiring that this, we're requiring the submission of a concept plan with a zone change. Which will give the commission a little bit of a perspective as to what the applicant is seeking now. And then we're also asking them to designate what their intention is when they submit that zone change. Are they going for elderly? Are they going for apartment? So again, we think that will help bring a little bit of that perspective so that we know what we're looking at. It's not necessarily binding, but a concept plan, I think, is, is helpful. We adjusted and added to the second one there be. To include as identified in the town sewer service area map. And then cleaned up some of the language at the bottom, again, not to change the intent. But make it so that it was not in conflict with some of the other sections of the regulation. Particularly. When you're talking about egress. We all know that the applicant's goal was to make it very clear that. There shouldn't be another way to access the development from a neighboring subdivision. That was something we heard a lot about. But the way that it was written originally, there was some confusion and not wanting to debate what is additional egress, what's primary egress. You know, we wanted to make it very clear. So we adjusted that language as well. To not prevent access from a local road, because most roads in East Windsor are local. But to require that if a larger development needed another curb cut, because let's say traffic analysis said it needed it, right? Because one of the things that this section requires is a traffic analysis. So if their engineer says they need two curb cuts, well, then they need to be on a collector road or an arterial road. So again, we don't, we did not change the content. Statute says we can't make the regulation less restrictive unless we go back out to, to public hearing and notice a crop. So all of these restrictions or additions, rather, are equally or more restrictive than what was proposed, at least in my, my view. And I'll happy, happily stop talking and answer any questions you have.
So why don't we take this in orderly fashion? We'll go in reverse. Mr. Klosowski, do you have any? Any points you'd like to bring up? Questions among debate? You have questions for staff?
Yeah, I'll start with where you added this about the service by public water. Municipal sewer is identified by the town sewer service area map. I read that as what is existing now. So in, in the case of an applicant who wants to extend the sewer line. To service an area, this doesn't allow for that, because the way I read this is it's an existing sewer line. Is that, is that the intent or is that how it's written?
Yeah, so. The town does have the sewer service area map, which was updated. Not all that recently, but I think within the last ten years or so. And it identifies the various areas that are in to be served by sewer. So the idea with that language is that if somebody wants to rezone twenty-five acres, you know, in the middle of. An area that the town has identified through the, through this map as not eligible or, or should not be eligible for sewer. Then it allows that, then allows you to be in the position to really consider that. They would then need to change the map. So it's further encouraging density in the areas the sewer service area map has said is, is or will be appropriate. Does that make sense?
Okay, so the service area map is not necessarily of what's existing. It's of, of what the area they feel they can handle and serve.
Right, so you, right, it's, it also, and I'm trying to pull it up, but I, I'm failing with my screens here. And Clark, if I'm misrepresenting, let me know, but it, yeah, it will include future areas as well. So there are. Parcels shown that are not currently served, but are shown as an area that can be served.
Okay, so in the, one of the previous meetings, it was mentioned that the intent may have been to. Put a line in only large enough to serve the, the new development. So now all this property that is abutting, the, the line that's run. To get to the new development, if it's not sized that they can hook up to it, that's kind of negating our sewer service area map. Or it just would put a hardship on the town now that these, if any. You know, residents that were in front of this line wanted to hook up, it would now be on the town to increase the, the pipe size.
Yeah, so I actually did reach out to the health district because that was a question that I had and I, and I have not heard back yet. But it was basically, if infrastructure is installed into the ground at a capacity of, let's say, supporting a hundred bedrooms. And state health code says if your septic fails and you're within proximity to a sewer line, you have to connect. Who pays for that? Because I don't think that the town can necessarily force a private property owner to install a pipe. For potential, maybe future development capacity, but at the same time, we're not gonna rip the pipe up and put it in to have one house connect. So I was, I was wondering if there perhaps was language in the health code that said, provided the sewer system can, can accept that capacity, right? The town can't constantly be upgrading its pump stations every time a septic fails here or there. So I was trying to figure out where that line was and I haven't yet heard back. But it is a good question.
So could we put any type of language that it would be size adequate to serve any existing development? So we don't have to worry about what future could be built on a property, but if you're passing in front of four houses that are already existing. Would it, it should be able to handle those four houses?
I think you could absolutely have that conversation when they're proposing their development and they're saying, we're gonna have it served by sewer. And this is the plan and you'll have some comments from WPCA that talks about capacity and you'll say, well, listen. There's six houses between you and your connection point and we want you to include that capacity because, you know, we've heard that soils aren't great in that area. And I think you could definitely have that conversation when they propose that infrastructure.
Okay. The secondary means of egress is, is realistically having to deal with it. How large of a development and, and what the traffic study says. I've only seen a few traffic studies in my time on the, on the commission and I, I, my opinion is that they're kind of subjective to interpretation. I've not yet one come across, seen one that says, yeah, you can't build this because the, the roads can't handle the traffic. So I, I, trying to, trying to limit density based on the capacity of the road. I don't know, does the traffic study have enough, have enough teeth to it? There are enough information that would actually disqualify a, a, a. Large development from a, from an existing road, because that seemed to me as being the, the number one concern of. All the abutters or anybody in that area would be the increase in traffic.
I think that if the traffic study that is proposed for any development, once you see the densities and everything else. And they have a traffic engineer prepare a study and then our engineer reviews it, you may, you're right. It's, it's not likely that you're gonna have a traffic study that says adding fifty units in an area that, fifty houses. Or apartments in an area that's already served, that already, a road that already serves houses and apartments. It's the same size car. It's not like it's gonna be. That capacity somehow gonna get blown, but there may be intersections that have, that have signals that the timing. Is not set up for the number of trips per day that may need to be adjusted, or you may simply find that. A traffic study that says this will increase the number of trips per day by a hundred and fifty cars an hour. You may feel as the commission that that is too intense for the area that is proposed. A lot of the same discussions that you talk about with drive-throughs and traffic along Route five and in the HIZ. So you're right that it's unlikely that the traffic report is gonna say this is not possible. But I think it may give you data that you may, may decide this is too dense, too many trips for the area proposed.
Mike, if I can expand upon that, having probably looked at thousands of traffic studies in my professional career. I haven't seen one traffic study yet that says that certain development cannot be built where the roadway capacity is not adequate. What they do is they, they suggest mitigated measures such as added capacity. Like what, what Mike the motto suggesting, adding traffic control signals, adding stop signs, widening the road, doing X, Y, and Z. Those are the ways to mitigate impacts from a traffic study. You're not gonna find one traffic study that says. There's not enough for, so if the developer wants to really push forward, what it is, is they have to understand that these, these. Roadway mitigation measures need to be done and allow, in order to complement, accomplish, excuse me, accommodate the development. That's how it's always handled. And we don't know what the effects are because the traffic study hasn't been done yet. But you're gonna, the traffic, you're, you're gonna see if this thing does come to fruition. It's not gonna say, no, not enough capacity. If that were the case. They would be saying, you know, this is, this is what you would need to do to make adequate roadway capacity. Whatever location at the site driveway, five miles down the road, whatever it is.
Well, that's kind of why I think the, the original verbiage with the MFDD being required to be on one of the, the major. Roads in our town, that the only area it served is, is by one forty or Route five, just for that particular reason. Alright, that, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll certainly have an opportunity to circle back with you. Commissioner Thurs, comments, questions, observations?
I had the same questions that Mike had, so I'm, I'm good this time. Thank you.
Okay, Frank, yourself?
I'm all set at this point. Sir, Mike brought up some good questions. I've answered some of my concerns. I'm all set. I'm all set.
Okay. Ian?
Um, I'm really struggling with this. The reason I'm struggling is the plan of conservation and development um, is very clear on page 33 where it says an application for a multi-family development should not be approved unless the site is located within an area identified as a village area or a non-rural area on the residential growth plan. And basically what the plan does in my mind is it directs our denser development to the village areas and the area in the eastern part of the town. The plan does provide for a good mix of housing, multifamily, um, single family, different densities, um. And I don't know that anybody, because I wasn't involved at the time you guys were working on the plan, thought about single um, condominiums. But in my mind, really they're single family homes, but they could be allowed to be denser than a traditional R3, which is where they're um, potentially located. And um, to me that as you add density, you change the, the character of a neighborhood. And I don't know if you talked about it and thought about it, but people in the public hearing felt that the plan had been vetted with the townspeople. And this is what, you know, was the path the town had agreed upon. And I feel like, I don't know, I wasn't here. I didn't hear the vetting and the conversation. But I'd be curious what the public comment was at that time. If you guys have any recollection. Yeah. No, I wouldn't have recollection either of something that long ago.
Any other observations, Ian?
No, that's the piece that's I'm struggling with.
And if I might comment, the uh, plan of conservation development is what, 10 years old? And at that point, the atmosphere of the town has not changed since then, except there has been different changes. And again, I don't have to remind you, but I have to remind myself that this, this is not the Bible of the, of the development. It's a suggestion of the book. And a particularly a suggestion 10 years ago, things have changed. And, and I you know, if we took everything in that plan of conservation and develop as, as gospel, we'd be in deep trouble on the commission.
Yeah, I recognize that, but there's something to be said for having areas that are denser and it known to people. But I agree with you. There's flexibility.
And, and I can recall at that point, we were trying to encourage growth. We wanted growth. We didn't, we wanted single family homes. We wanted to have a single family homes on large lots if possible. But again, we were also thinking about the village type areas. So things evolve and, and and, and I, I, I don't see this as really that much conflicting with the plan of conservation and development as intended.
It, it's also been an undeveloped project for 15 years. It's been sitting there dormant.
Ian, I, I've also struggled in, in my, in my uh, contemplation process as to, as to what can I live with the decision I'm going to ultimately make at some point, whether that's tonight or, or a future meeting? And I, I keep on asking myself, I'm trying to run through some different scenarios of we don't have an active, there is no proposal to build anything near, but ultimately it's going to, it could potentially lead to something. I'm trying to envision maybe some concepts that could there. So at one time there was a subdivision approval with X amount of units. And they were spaced so far apart. So there was a finite number of homes there. And I'm trying to, trying to envision, you know, if, if this text amendment were to pass and the subsequent approvals regarding special use permits and other, I think, everything was all passed. What would the, what would, what would this residential community look like? And I would think basically it's just going to be single family, how to, ju- just, just how the regulation, it's going to be more dense. Basically, so it, it's, it's really all about density. But, but there truly is something that in my, in my opinion, that kind of separates us apart. If this went a traditional subdivision, there is something that potentially could happen that maybe some of the butters may not be happy with. It's that connection to to the, um, gee, I'm s- that the road is slipping my mind right there, um. What's the name of that cul-de-sac road?
Sullivan Farms.
Sullivan Farms Road. It just was down there uh, before this meeting tonight. And, and we, we've heard from many, many people loud and clear that we don't, they don't want this to be an access point, a cut through. It's a very quaint neighborhood. And basically the only people that go down there, the people that live there, friends and family, and there's no other reason to be down there. If this were a traditional subdivision, you're opening up the floodgates. That would probably be a primary, that, that would be an access point. So the way this thing is crafted, would it, it's like, it's, it's, it's like a, a, um, uh, um, pros and cons, you know, for, for eliminate, for, for limiting access that no one really wants, other than maybe emergency, you know, a little, a few extra homes, a little denser development. And it, is that a value to the community? And I guess for the people that live there, we've heard that, you know, it's maybe not in my backyard, maybe somewhere else. You know, um, you know, it, I, 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 I'm always amazed by the people that, that, and, and I value public comment. But it's surprising. You don't see people in Warehouse Point commenting on this because it's, they don't seem to be affected by that. Why is it only people that live in the affected areas commenting on these things? But, but this truly affects the whole community because we're changing, we're, we're changing the text in this and, and we've proven that this could apply at other places. Why? Why are, you know, so I'm kind of frustrated by that. So.
The one thing that I'll say is I drove on Wenton Road today and noted that there is a dense development next to Wenton Road. And their emergency access is blockaded. So, you know, the solution to neighborhood traffic is totally, totally solvable.
Yeah. You know, it, it's, it's the same old story. Everybody likes their little piece of heaven, their little slice of heaven. I've said this probably 10 times, but I'll say it again. I love my little slice of heaven here. I have everything I want. But we also have to consider that other people would like to have their little slice of heaven. And we can't be so restrictive as individuals in a community to try to deny these people for things that perhaps they have the right to have. Provided they're not, you know, they're not harming my little slice of heaven. So as you said, Joe, it's always not my backyard. And I've heard that 50 times in the last 25 years or however long I've been on the board.
And the proof is there. We haven't heard from one constituent that doesn't live in the area. Oh, well. So Mike, yes, you have a comment?
Okay, um, one, one of my philosophies since I've been on this board is I've always kind of felt that if you move next to an empty piece of property, it's unrealistic to expect it to stay undeveloped for the entire time that you're there. But the, the split side of that is if you do your due diligence and say, okay, they could put in, you know, 40 houses next to me. And then the next thing it turns out to be 140 houses, well, that's not what I signed up for. You know, I, I bought the property, I built my house, I knew what I was in for, and now you're changing the rules of the game on me. I don't want to live next to 140 houses. I wanted to live next to 40 houses, you know, you know what I'm saying? So that's kind of the, the philosophy I've been trying to weigh back and forth is like, to, to leave it undeveloped is unrealistic. But to change the rules after the fact is kind of a disservice too.
But, but, but Mike, have, are they doing that? Have they done that? Is that their intentions? We don't know.
I mean, I'm not, this is, this is a text amendment. It will go to anybody who meets the criteria. So you can now get a 20 acre piece of property that by right, they could try to throw in 150 properties in there. But if you go to the max density allowed by the MFDD, you know, so that's what concerns me is that, you know, we're kind of tailoring this towards one particular development, but this, this has to apply anywhere in town that meets the criteria.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree 100% with that, but there's not that many areas in town. Can you name any?
Well, we got someone put on the record that, um, the area of Ry Street by St. Catherine Cemetery met the criteria.
Uh, behind St. Catherine Cemetery on Norton Road, that area behind him?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
And I'm sure by combining properties elsewhere in town, you could, you could find somewhere else that it would meet the criteria.
I thought last meeting, Mary showed a map of the properties that would be affected. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I mean, it basically comes down to, do you want to allow more density in a residential area? That, that's what it really is.
Well, let me ask the members of the community.
Let me ask one, some more question. If we don't do that, what happens? If we don't allow that, assume we don't, now what happens? What happens with these properties? I mean, if we're, if we're projecting, if we're trying to project or foresee what could happen, let's try to project and see what, what will happen if we don't approve this. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to or not going to.
They, they develop at the density that's currently allowed by the existing zoning.
And, and then, and then they could cut through the back way through the cul-de-sac, which is what they don't want.
Yeah. Well, I guess that would be open for debate. I mean, that would be part of a subdivision, um,
Plan.
Plan. And, and, and that, and that's something that, that, that we could debate.
Right.
I, I just, my last words are, I just think we have to go on what's given, the facts. We can't, we, you know, we have to obviously concern with the public. I mean, that's why we're on a commission. But we can't get so emotionally involved in it that we can't see the forest through the trees.
So commission members, do we have an, do we have enough information for us to, to, um, to take a vote on this? We need any additional information from staff and clarification from staff? Are we ready to take action on this tonight? Or we want another, another two weeks to deliberate amongst ourselves and, and, and still continue to, to think about this. We're not required statutorily to vote on this tonight.
I'm ready to, I'm ready to act.
Me too.
I don't hear anyone else.
I could go either way.
I could go either way too.
What does that mean?
I I will keep mulling it in my mind if it goes on because it's not a clear, one right answer. There's pros and cons. So whenever the decision time is, I'll make the decision.
Okay. Well, may I ask? If you keep mulling on, if we have another go around at it, will you be ready then, you think?
Uh, I do it now. It's just one of those where it's not simple for me.
Of course not. It's not simple for any of us.
There's, there's pros and cons and it's, it's one that.
So your answer is yes, you're ready to act tonight?
I could act tonight.
Thank you.
So I, I have a question for, for Mike D'Amato, um. There's always this perception of spot zoning. I know we're not zoning anything. We're talking about tax amendments. But could someone make an argument where there's a perception here that we're trying to tweak the regulations for a particular piece of property? Granted, there are a couple exceptions we around the community where this might also fit. But is this almost a klaxas example of, of spot zoning? I don't mean this is, well, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. How, I, I, how, how would you answer that? If someone, if someone said, geez, you know, you're, we're not creating a zone, we're tweaking, we're tweaking, we're tweaking language in, in, in the regulations.
Um, so I think, well, number one, there's, there's a lot of, not a lot, but there is some case law actually to support the idea that spot zoning is not, is not this, this red herring that everybody has sort of think, thought it to be. Um, it's, it's, it's not so easily created. There was a lot of testimony during hearing that perhaps this wasn't tailored enough because this could apply to so many properties around town, right? We threw around various numbers of the num, of the eligible properties. So the mere fact that there are clearly more than a handful of properties that are eligible, I think makes it very clear to anyone on the outside that the commission understands this would apply. You have clearly contemplated how this would land across all of the various areas that are, that are potentially eligible. Um, so I would say that's, that's not likely to be the case. Um, and I, I, it's not something that I would be particularly concerned about, um, from my perspective.
Thank you for being honest. Okay. Well, if it seems like we have a, a majority of the commission that wants to take action tonight, will someone kindly offer a motion? A motion of some sort?
Well, I think the way to do it would be a motion to approve and see if it passes.
Correct.
That's what we have from staff as opposed to making a motion to deny. So I will make a motion to approve, application PZ 2021 dash 06 for a text amendment application to section 802, the multi-family development district. The applicant is SJK Properties LLC. And, um, the commission would find that the proposed change is in keeping with the general intent of the plan of conservation and development and the existing MFDD regulations. And the proposed language should be modified as indicated in the memo from Mike D'Amato revised April 22nd, 2021. And, um, that would be my motion.
There's a motion on the table for approval of the proposed text amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
So here's our discussion point. A- a- any, anything? Any comments from the commission regarding, regarding the proposed motion? Okay, hearing none? A call for a vote? All those in favor say aye or raise their hand?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those opposed? So motion fails. So my question, Mike D'Amato, is so motion, so I guess the there's no need to take up another, uh, no, a, another motion because we acted on this one. So the language as proposed failed.
Right. I don't think you need to, I don't think you need to do anything different unless you think there's a modification that is appropriate, but otherwise, no.
Okay. So Ian, and of course the applicant has a right of, of, um, of proposing something different. Continue to tweak the language. Okay. Okay. So for the record, the Okay, so for the record, the motion failed.
Joe, this is Peg.
Yes.
Could you just read me back who is in favor and who was against?
So. It was two to three, so Frank, you voted in favor.
Correct.
Jim, you were in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
And myself and Mike were, were, were against the proposed tax amendment.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. I see that Samantha is now in the audience. So based on Clark's advice, I, I guess we can reconsider our motion to close the public, I mean, to table the public. Hearing. Clark, hi, I've never done it this way. How do you suggest that we go about undoing some action? So we can try to accommodate Samantha here since she is here tonight? Take up a motion to reconsider the motion to, to table the public hearing?
I would be happy to make a motion to revoke my motion. If that's a appropriate behavior.
I love.
I'm not really sure.
Mike, feel free to weigh in. You've sat through more of these meetings than I have, but it, do you see any issue with? Voting to reconsider the motion to table?
Um, no, I think that with, with all of these things, it's all about notice. And anybody that's, you know, at the meeting, it's not as if you've adjourned the meeting and decided, wait, 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 we changed our mind. They're pulling in now, right? So the meeting is here, it's still going on. Anybody that was at the meeting still has the opportunity to speak. If it's a public hearing, you know, I, I don't really think that anybody's rights to the, the open process have been stepped on. You're still going through this, the, the, the channel, so I, I would not be uncomfortable with that.
Okay, so Anne, do you want to rescind your motion?
I will. Rescind my motion to table action on PZ. Twenty twenty-one dash thirteen fourteen Sullivan Farms Road for a special use permit application. For an accessory apartment and, and put it on the agenda for next up.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. A call for vote. All those in favor say aye or raise their hand?
Aye.
Aye. For the record, I'll read the public hearing into the record. So we're now entertaining item A under new public hearings, PZ dash twenty twenty-one dash thirteen fourteen Sullivan Farm Road. Special use permit application for an accessory apartment. Anne, is there someone here to speak on this? Samantha, is that you?
That is me.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you, hi, can you just briefly introduce yourself to the commission? And just briefly provide an overview or an explanation of what your request is?
Sure, Samantha Frisell, fourteen Sullivan Farm Road, right in the area that you guys were just voting on something else. We're trying to finish an accessory apartment for our special needs son downstairs. And to give him some independence. And we are just looking to put in a kitchen, actually. And hoping that we'll be able to do so.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed staff, I think it was Clark, you've been going back and forth with us, with Samantha regarding getting some clarification. Regarding where on the property, this and that, and, and I think you've kind of, you feel caught, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but. Have you reached clarity regarding what you need from a staff, a staff perspective on this one?
Yes, I have.
Okay. So I'll query the commission members before we open it up to public comment. Anne, you have any, you have any questions for, for Samantha?
On the floor plan. Um. Of. What I guess isn't clear to me, it was this submitting, the applicant has clarified. It's in the open storage space nearest the stairs. Does that mean downstairs, upstairs, main floor?
Right, this is all on the first floor, which is considered, it's a walkout basement. So on that particular, yeah, on that particular floor plan, there's a couple of. Existing open storage spaces and we were going to utilize one for his bedroom.
Okay, thank you.
Frank, any comments, questions?
Uh, no, no, I have no questions. And Samantha, I, I congratulate you on, on doing what you're doing for your son.
Oh, thank you.
Jim, any, anything from you?
Yeah, I have no questions. I agree with, with Frank said.
Mike, Commissioner Kozowski?
Um, one, one question, does Sullivan Farms Development have a, an association there at all?
No.
Okay, then, then I don't see any need to involve anyone else there then. Okay, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Members of the audience, this is a, a public hearing. Are there any comments or questions? Feel free to speak up if you'd like to ask a question or have a comment. Okay, I'm not hearing any. Um, I think we have enough information. Someone kindly offer a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing on application PZ. Twenty twenty-one dash thirteen for a special use permit application for an accessory apartment. At fourteen Sullivan Farms Road.
There's a motion to close a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Call for vote. Those in favor say aye or raise their hand?
Aye.
Eyes have it unanimous. The public hearing is closed. And I believe we have a motion, a draft motion, possible action?
We do.
Okay.
Um. I'll make a motion to approve application PZ. Twenty twenty-one thirteen dash thirteen for a special use permit. For an accessory apartment at fourteen Sullivan Farms Road. Map one hundred, block seventeen, lot sixteen dash seven. It's an R three zone. This approval is granted subject to conformance with the submitted application, supporting materials and public hearing. Presentation as may be modified by the commission and this approval. And the following findings and condition. The one finding is the proposed use is in conformance with the standard set forth by section four oh seven. And seven oh one, and there are ten conditions. Um, in the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one memo from Clark Chapin. To the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission.
There's a motion on the table for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. A call for vote. All those in favor say aye or raise their hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Five ayes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving along, um, anything under correspondence? Okay, business meeting or Kingshire subdivision expiration? This is interesting.
So why don't I start? This came about recently because. The person who owns what is phase four and phase five of a five-phase subdivision. Called in. Inquired about, could he sell phases four and five? Originally, he said to two different developers, or I'm sorry, two different buyers. And when we looked at it, we discovered that the subdivision. Had been approved as a thirty-five lot subdivision in two thousand and five. Uh, in two thousand and ten, I think when they came up for renewal, they. Indicated that things from two thousand and eight forward were, had slowed down the project. So it was renewed for another five years. And two thousand and fifteen. And I, I should say that each phase. I'm not sure if phase one was the same. I, I think phase one's. One developer, phase two and three were two different LLCs but with the same members. Um, so in two thousand and fifteen, they missed the renewal. Deadline and then. Went back to planning and zoning. And I, I, if I'm remembering correctly, it expired in April. So they may have missed it by a few months, but planning and zoning renewed it. Uh, the statute provides a limitation of fourteen years. So it, it was renewed until April twenty-sixth of two thousand and nineteen. And this is what we discovered when. The owner of phase four and five contacted the office. Connecticut General Statutes eight, my, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's twenty-six C. Requires that when a subdivision expires, it should be filed on the Mylars. In the town clerk's office and we saw counsel from our land use attorney who advised us to. Go ahead and file it on the Mylars. Which we did and. Since then, I've had. Two discussions with the owner who has since decided. Uh, that there's one buyer who would like to buy phases four and five together. Uh, again, checking with legal counsel. That would be allowed with the understanding that it's no longer an approved subdivision. It's just a raw piece of land. However, in the conversation I had with the owner, he informed me that two of the. Previously approved lots belong to somebody else. And Mike, I don't know if you can share that final Mylar?
Uh, yeah, I can.
So for those of you who. You may recall. Down Rice Street. To Apothecary's Hall Road and, and it's at the corner of Apothecary's Hall and. I don't remember, does Rice Street continue and then it turns onto Dempsey? There we go.
Near the gun club.
You got Ry, Ryan Dempsey at the bottom of your screen and the Apothecary's comes on the left.
So phase one was completed. Uh, the town accepted the road, no issues. Uh, phase two, there was actually an outstanding one lot that. Has a zoning permit to build a house, but the house hasn't been constructed. Phase three is fully built out. Uh, however, the town. Uh, has not accepted the road because the final surfacing of the road was never completed. Uh, there doesn't appear to be a bond in place to do that. Uh, the LLCs, I have been told, were no longer in, in existence. So we have been struggling with how do we recover the. Monies necessary to complete Napoleon Drive and bring it up to the town, uh, town road standards. If you look at phase, I'll go left, right, phase five and phase four. It's the two lots on the very right-hand side. On phase four, lots ten and nine that are owned by somebody else. And that cul-de-sac at the end of Napoleon Drive is temporary. It's, it exists today. Because Abraham George Lane was never constructed. So. If the owners of phase four and five, with the exception of lots ten and nine. Does go ahead and convey it. Then lots nine and ten would be landlocked. Uh, these are the issues we've been struggling with over the last couple of days. I spoke to the owner of both those two lots on the right as well as remaining ten lots and. Indicated that in order for him, for the gentleman who owns the ten lots indicated that. Uh, he could in fact sell it as raw land. Provided he. Did what he could to. Create access to those two remaining lots. And that's pretty much the highlights.
So there's no dwelling units on lots, uh, ten and eleven?
No.
No. Those independent owners or the same owner, ten and eleven?
Ten and eleven. Are owned by DMD Family Trust. There was a note. Mike, I don't know, your screen isn't being shared any longer, at least on my screen.
Hold on.
That area to the right, the open area says remaining land to be retained by DMD Realty, uh, Family Limited Partnership. They did not retain that. They in fact sold that, what does it say, fourteen point five six acres? There's a parcel. Uh, just north of. If you could scroll up just a little more. Just north of that one owned by Jeffrey Romel or Rommel. There's two or three acres there and then the rest is. Uh, was also sold to two different people. So there's no access from that side either.
So what is the best possible outcome here? Someone reapply for subdivision application for phases four and five? They build the infrastructure for that, that road that doesn't exist?
That would be the best possible outcome, but I was told today that the person interested in purchasing those ten lots. Or what was previously ten lots is interested in using it for farming. Which would mean that the road would never be built.
Why would you want to use it for farming when it's worth more money as lots? Parcels.
I cannot answer that.
So no one has a legal obligation. To put the final top code on Napoleon Drive. There's, there's no one around for that anymore.
That's my understanding.
How did that bond get released? I know you don't know Clark, but. That's something should never have been released without the final code, obviously.
I think Jason mentioned this a while back and it's the pros and cons of, I'm, excuse me. You know, their, their new permitting software kind of has all these checks and balances in it. Something like this probably would not happen again. He mentioned this to us.
We, we actually found no evidence that we, that the planning. And development department ever had a bond or released a bond. That's not to say that that's not what happened, but we haven't seen evidence either way.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Jason. Can I just? This, this is a real concern for us and every time Clarkson comes into my office, he brings.
Jason, you just cut out. I don't know what happened.
Sorry, how about now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Um, so we're trying to resolve who the responsible party is for finishing Napoleon Drive, if that person even still exists. Um, and. The circumstance with the bond gets back to a. process management that had been going on in town on a number of subdivisions, a number, an indeterminate number of subdivisions for a long, long time. Um, the developers agreement that you all uh, approved as to form last year is intended to stop that from happening prospectively, but this is just another one of those circumstances where we don't know how many of these time bombs we're still gonna stumble across. So we're trying to use any legal means that we can to rec- to recapture uh, any obligation by a former developer. Um, but so far, I mean, all we're doing is, is every time Clark opens up a new drawer, he finds new problems, so I guess that's a long way of saying we're doing what we can to stop this from happening again, but we can't do much about cleaning up what happened before.
So do we have any mechanism to force the prospective buyer for phases four and five to make a subdivision, a re-subdivision application?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because legally, there is not those, those lines do not exist on a map anymore, that or those approvals have expired, they've kinda vanished.
That's correct.
There was a legal notice that went out in the paper regarding this, these activities, what was that intent? What, what was the intent of that? Just to kinda put it out there for the entire public to know? Or any prospective buyers to know? I mean, what was, what was the objective of that?
Uh, I, I, Mike, if you, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think anytime a subdivision expires, this would be what should have happened, it would be the normal course of action, including the legal notice.
Okay, it's just a process, we're just following process.
I think it's, it's almost likened to an official action on behalf of the board, so it's, it's almost like a notice of decision. Um, and it's just a putting everybody on notice once it goes into the paper, but I just really wanna, Clark mentioned it and for anybody who's listening or, or listens to this later. The statute says the commission shall file, we are obligated to file this notice by statute the moment it expires. This guy actually got like a lot of time as a freebie, right? It was expired, but we hadn't done anything, so we didn't choose to do this just because we didn't wake up and decide. Um, statute obligates us to, to do what we, what we did.
I was wondering if there are other subdivisions in the same boat? Where they didn't get fully built and their time has expired.
Well, oh, sorry, when this application came through, two thousand and five was the boom and Ford, everybody was slamming. And then we had a moratorium, I think around out of time, stopped the building, so there was a lot of confusion going on, I'm sure.
To answer Ann's question, um, relatively directly, we are looking into ascertaining how broad the circumstances may apply. Um, we just don't know yet.
Yeah, it's just a new one, I never knew about this process.
Yeah, those are the worst ones, the ones that sneak right up on you, but um, long story short, this is a, a problem that predates almost all of our involvements in, in the government process, but we're, we're the ones who are tasked with trying to fix it, so um, I, we had a meeting this morning or this afternoon, some point today, Clark and I and uh, Amy O'Toole, the finance director, to talk about uh, process improvements and um, making sure that there's adequate records prospectively, but again we can't, we have no idea this, at this point, the scope of what's behind us.
Mike Damato, can you kindly pull up that map? Can you display that map one more time? So there is an interested party that wants to buy the remaining lands of phase four and five other than lots ten and eleven, is that fairly accurate, where thereabouts?
Uh, lots nine and ten.
Oh, not, not nine and ten, I apologize. So that action in and of itself does not require planning and zoning action because you're you're it's not a subdivision, cause it, it subdivision requires three or more. Or combining of a lot, so it's combining lots or breaking up of the lots? What does that person want to do? Combine lots?
Well
Or there's really nothing to combine?
That, that's my understanding with the expiration of the subdivision, it reverts back a single lot. Uh, so there would be nothing to combine. And the owner of lots nine and ten understands that it's no longer two lots, it's a single roughly two acre lot.
And there's no way to get access to that. And a person as of right could build a house on that if they so choose, a single dwelling unit.
You know, that that's a, that's a tough one because I don't know how you could build a house without having access to a town road.
Oh, uh, well, why wouldn't they have act, why couldn't they have a driveway from Apothecary's Hall Road? Just a long driveway where Abraham George Lane is, couldn't they just have a long driveway?
Well, they could, but they would need an easement to do it. And right now, there's no easement in place for the owners, for the owner of that, those two lots on the eastern end of it.
Oh, I, I see, I see, okay.
So one of the possible solutions that would make it maybe more palatable for everyone involved is making that, providing that access by way of easement off of the end of Napoleon Drive, since it's about a third of the distance. And actually where Abraham George Lane is proposed, uh, there were two tobacco barns that still stand today in the way, so uh, that's probably, not only would that be three times longer than going from Napoleon Drive, but there's also two barns in the way presently.
Are all the houses on Napoleon Drive actually built? Because when you go all the way back to the end of it, it looks like there's still a vacant lot on the right-hand side of the road.
No, they are all built.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I noticed some clearing there earlier this week and I don't know if that's uh
There's clearing going on, on a front lot. Um, and there's also clearing going on on the back of Dempsey. There's tons of mountain tree trucks going back there.
Well, I, I guess members of the commission, I don't, I don't think that the town staff is looking for us to do anything, you're just bringing this to our attention. And uh and I, I, I don't know if we have any grandiose wisdom, but it seems like you guys are, are taking appropriate action and we just hope for the best out, best possible outcome for the community, that's all.
Well, due to the uh, unusual nature of our request to file that this uh, la- last week on the land records, we felt that it was fitting to brief the entire commission.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else for good of the order for tonight?
I, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um Mr. Charbonneau or his representative, it was before us a, a little while back when we were talking about a possible short extension waiting on the, the ruling on gravel pit solar which has since been a- approved. So is he now operating without a permit or is he ceased operation or what's, what's going on with with that?
So I don't know uh whether he's operating, but um we no longer have any jurisdiction, even if he were.
I saw trucks going in there yesterday.
And, and Clark, um, mind my ignorance, why don't we have any jurisdiction? Because the siding council now uh, has jurisdiction?
Yes, once the certificate, the certificate is, is issued by the siding council, a local jurisdiction ends and that certificate was uh, issued on February twenty-fifth, I think the date was.
So if there are any health or safety concern there, we would have to approach the siding council for them to research it and take appropriate action on their property, on, on property under their jurisdiction?
Or work with whoever, whichever state agency would be the appropriate one. Um, it, it's not as if uh, they can do anything with stormwater, for instance, they just have to work with DEEP on uh, those sorts of issues, so it depends on what the issue was.
Okay.
We, we would reach out to whichever agency was the appropriate one, depending on what the issue is.
Has the property transferred or is it still owned by the people who own the gravel pit?
I do not, no, I, I'm not aware that it has transferred.
Um, so they could operate a gravel pit and a volume reduction facility and keep going until the siding council does something about it?
No, the, the siding council um has done really the heavy lifting part of it. Um, however, the application from gravel pit solar uh, required, you may recall that this is being part of the discussion we had the last time we discussed it. Uh, they have certain grades uh, that they'll, they both wanna start at and then end at. Uh, so I'm relatively confident that they're working with uh, Charbonneau at this point to make sure that things aren't making it even more adverse for their starting point.
But as, as far as the restoration plan that was part of their permit, that's null and void now, they don't have to abide by any of that?
Uh, as far as we are concerned, yes, um, again, uh, gravel pit solar did present kind of those starting elevations and everything as they anticipated they would be uh, to the siding council, so it, it's really uh, up to them to hold Charbonneau's uh, feet to the fire on making sure that things uh, aren't in a worse condition than uh, the condition they were the last we knew.
I had noticed the last couple of days that the road was swept in front of the, the access point on Windsorville, so so there is activity going on in that site, it looks like someone's doing some due diligence, at least to clean the roads or sweep the roads as it's been past practice or past requirements. So Mike, are you, do you know if there's any, any suspicious activity going on there where you're just asking, because we, you know, we're
No, it was just something that, that I thought of, you know, once I saw that gravel pit solar had been approved. Just kinda see what the natural progression was gonna be as far as when we would see, you know, the, the end of the, the end of the gravel pit and the, and hopefully the end of the, the dust complaints and moving on to the, to the next phase and, and helping out with all the uh, illegal activity and all of that.
We're on this conversation, is there an update regarding the proposal for a solar farm on East Road? Does anybody know what the, with, with, with that is, whether that's a pipe dream or is that moving forward to the regulatory process? Anybody know?
This is Jason again, I can shed, shed a little bit of light on that. Um, I don't know if they've yet got their approval through the siding council, um, their petition number was fourteen twenty-six. I don't know if it's passed yet or not. Um, they have um, approached the town with interest in a stabilization agreement. Um, and we have not resolved that yet. Quite honestly, we are very far apart. So I don't know uh, how that's going to go.
Okay. So the discussions are continuing.
Yeah, but we are very far apart.
Okay. Thank you.
There's also, I think both sides are, are attentively watching what's going on in the legislature. There are a number of bills that are proposed that would change how those agreements are structured and, and to what extent the host community even has a say in the terms of the stabilization agreement. Um, so there are a number of active bills going on that we're, I think both sides are watching.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to go to the order tonight? Here are none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
A motion on the table?
Excuse me? I, I, I missed, I missed an opportunity here, I guess. Um, my name is Randy Clifton. I live at Seven Hickory Trail here in East Windsor. And I was unable to, to attend your last meeting and I have a question on PZ twenty twenty-one oh nine. And that's the uh, one twenty-four Newberry.
Randy, I think I, um the portion of our public participation has, had passed, that that would, that happened sometime around six-thirty tonight. Um, may I suggest that you make a formal inquiry to the planning and development office and contact staff? And, and ask your question through, through, through there. Is it appropriate? Is, is, is that, is that an option for you?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I just, I just didn't know that, I thought there was, uh, in the past, it was always a public at the end, so I was, that's what I was waiting for.
No, sir, that's uh, it's, it's never been part of our agenda, that's on the board of selectmen's agenda, this, our, our format's just a little bit different.
All right, I apologize, uh, thank you.
No problem, sir, no, thank you. Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the table, there's a second, any discussion? Here are none, I call for a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, everyone have a great night, see everyone in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.